And open our regular meeting of August 20th. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Brinkman?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Valdez?
Present.
Councilmember Cole?
Here.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Here.
Councilmember Elrod?
Here.
Councilmember Fay?
Here.
Councilmember Schlotter?
Here.
Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, any changes to the agenda?
No.
Seeing none, it is approved. So this is public comment opportunity. If you wish to address the city council, under the public comment, please have signed in on the speaker form. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. The city council is not authorized by the Colorado Meetings Law, Open Meetings Law, to discuss, comment, or take action at the meeting on an issue that is raised by the public that is not part of tonight's agenda. We may refer the matter, excuse me, we may refer the matter to staff to obtain additional information or report back as necessary or appropriate. Thank you. Joseph Trujillo? There will not be another opportunity for public comment tonight. Okay. Paul Bingham?
Good evening, counsel. I'm Paul Bingham, 236 West Delaware Circle in Littleton. For the past few years, we've had a thing called a Development Activity List on our city website. It's been great, very useful, et cetera. I've used a lot. It helps us keep track of development that's going on in town. But it hasn't worked well over the years. So I fust about it. That's what I do. If it doesn't work, I fuss about it. And I've talked to various members of the staff over the last few years, some of whom are gone now. The last time was about a month ago. Carl and I had a session about the whole thing. And about a week ago, I was looking something up on the Development Activity List. Bingo, it works like a champ. So I looked into why. So I'm here to tell you tonight that your staff has done a fine job of making a really complex computer program work really well. The people that did that are the Community Development Director Jennifer Henninger and one of her troops, Carl Onslager, and probably some others that I unfortunately don't have the names of, and Information Technology Director Ashley Bolton and her IT staff were involved in fixing it. So anyway, why am I telling you folks that? For one reason, I want to thank them, and the best way to thank somebody for doing a good job is to go tell their boss that they did a good job. So that's what I'm doing. Your troops did a fine job. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. John Enzing?
Thank you for having me. While I wish I could maintain the upbeat attitude from the last presenter, unfortunately, this is a little different. I'm a resident of Littleton, and I'm here to urge you to require Littleton police officers to wear recording devices of some kind, preferably body cams. I was recently convicted of a crime in Littleton based solely on the verbal testimony of a single officer. It's only possible because there's absolutely no oversight into anything that Littleton police officers are doing and how they do it. To put this in perspective, I'm assuming none of you drove here drunk today, but do you have any proof that you didn't? Do you have any proof that you weren't breathless in the parking lot by a Littleton police officer? Because if you don't, you could be found guilty in Littleton court system for a DUI. Sounds crazy, probably sounds ridiculous to you, and I would have said the same thing until six months ago. I was found guilty based solely on the verbal testimony of a single officer. Turns out, all it takes is them to somehow get you a ticket, maybe slip it on your windshield wiper, and testify in court that they definitely saw you do it. Doesn't matter that there's no evidence, obviously, because if you didn't do it, there's no evidence and there's no way a court would find you guilty. But turns out, that doesn't matter. All that matters is that one person says, "Oh yeah, I saw him do it," and you will be found guilty unless you can prove that you didn't do it. That's not how it's supposed to work. That's not how America is supposed to work. It's supposed to be innocent until proven guilty with the burden of beyond a reasonable doubt. And in 2019, it's impossible to reach that burden by just having one guy say, "Oh yeah, he definitely did it. Look at my notes that I wrote by hand that show that he did it." It's completely unacceptable. Unfortunately, there's a really simple solution. There's fully integrated body cam solutions that are under $500. You can get terabytes of storage for under $500. And even if it's not a full body cam system, you can get recording devices at Target for $60. They require way less storage, and you at least have some level of accountability for what officers in Littleton are doing. When I was trying to prove my innocence, what the officer was actually doing at the time and what actually happened, I submitted every records request I could think of to Ms. Hefner. She was extremely professional, extremely responsive, but it didn't help my case because there was no records. There was absolutely no record of anything that any officer does here on his shift. It's completely unacceptable. Yeah, that's all. Thank you very much for having me, and I hope you guys look into it.
Thank you. Jeanne Erickson?
Hello, city council. My name is Jeanne Erickson. I live in District One. I'm here tonight to express my concerns regarding the 71 single-family houses and duplexes that are planned to be sold or demolished according to the Littleton Housing Authority, now operating as South Metro Housing Options. The director stated that by getting rid of these properties, they would be able to provide more affordable housing. Well, by getting rid of single-family houses to provide more housing, to me, I guess that means that would be more apartments are going to be built. And that there are going to be no single-family houses available for low-income families in Littleton. I find that this very sad for our community. All of these properties were built in either 1976 or 1983. These are all newer than my house. They were scattered around Littleton neighborhoods so people of all ages could live together, or of all incomes could live together. I think it was a very thoughtful plan by whoever decided to build these houses. I drove by all the properties, and they are in very good shape. They look like they're very well-maintained. And there are many areas where there are multiple houses next to each other, and I would guess that is where they plan on tearing down perfectly good homes and putting up apartments. I'm wondering if the existing neighbors in these areas will be notified that that is what the plan is for their neighborhoods. These are neighborhoods that are currently single-family homes. It would drastically change their neighborhoods, putting up high-density apartments. The director also states that all of the individuals have been notified and will receive a voucher so that they can go live anywhere else, anywhere in the United States. I've heard that it's not easy to find someone to take these vouchers, so we are definitely causing a hardship to these citizens currently living in these houses. Like many items of importance in Littleton, all of this seems to be conducted behind closed doors and outside the public eye. Littleton Housing seems to have an executive session at every meeting and doesn't come out to vote on anything. This decision is affecting hundreds of citizens in a negative manner. I find it very disheartening that the city of Littleton thinks it's perfectly fine that we are eliminating all of these units. This also makes me wonder what is going on behind the scenes regarding Geneva Village. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanne. Next is Rich Stuckel.
Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I'm going to read this letter, and then I'll give you a copy. On May 7, my laptop was stolen while I was at the Starbucks at Littleton and Broadway. It was in a backpack next to me. I contacted Littleton Police. The officer, his name's on here, worked the case with Starbucks. The video allowed them to identify the thief. Thief was issued a municipal citation for theft, and I want to thank the officer and Littleton Police for their help, as well as Starbucks. Then I heard nothing. I contacted the Littleton City Attorney's Office on July 8 of 19. The person said they'd get back to me. I had a conversation with that office on July 18. I wrote them a letter and hand-delivered it on the 19th describing what was in the backpack and the sensitive information on the laptop. I never received any kind of reply to my letter, nor was I in any way involved in the court proceedings. I was never even informed, excuse me, of the court dates. From the court documents I have, it appears that the thief pleaded guilty in Littleton Court, but I can't figure out the date from the documents that I have. So I have some questions. Why was I not involved in any stage of this court case? Why was I not given the opportunity to be in the courtroom for the hearings? Why was there no communication to me from the city attorney? And I'd like to get a written response. I didn't put that in the letter, but I would appreciate a written response. Thank you.
Thank you. And you can hand the letters to the clerk. She'll make sure we get them. Thank you.
Hello there. My name is Ifden. I live at 2594 West Dry Creek Court, which is in District Four. I am here to speak about the creation of the River Park Metropolitan District. I have three areas of concern that I would like to express to counsel about the creation of this metro district in that area. First of all, I would like to talk about the need for the creation of the metropolitan district. I realize that there is a high cost associated with the infrastructure needed to have a new development. However, I feel that the developers would be able to finance the approximately $10 million or so needed for this kind of infrastructure, and it was not necessary to create a special district, which would have huge financial implications in the form of a mill levy at approximately, I believe, 30 mills, according to the latest version of the service plan, which I have read in full, that are unnecessary for the future residents of that area. Secondly, I would like to call the attention to a very concerning figure that I found in the service plan. It was originally in the service plan from July that was submitted. It was called the city's share of the contributions. In the latest service, in the latest service plan that was submitted on August 14, on page 44 of the service plan, it is now called the share by others. But that is still, as I understand, the contribution from the city. This is a total of $1,992,000.134 that the city would be giving to the builders for, and I quote, "on-site roadway improvements," so onsite, I believe, would be on the property of the development. Off-site roadway improvements, as well as landscaping, or, excuse me, general conditions. They would also be contributing to the bond, the insurance, and the contingency for the development. That is very concerning as a taxpayer and a resident of Littleton. I would just would like some more information about this. Finally, I would like to just take a minute to talk about the environmental impact of this development, as well as open space conservation. Open space in Littleton is at a premium, and it is a natural resource that we cannot ignore. I would urge the council to ask the developers how much money they foresee making for each square acre of land in the development, and then ask yourself, how much money, or what is the, we can't quantify how much money that money, or that land will have for future generations in the form of open space. I know it is an economic, and it's an economic issue, but it also is an issue for the city and for the residents, not just for ourselves, but for the next generation, and the next generation, and the next generation. So I just urge the council to keep that in mind as they make this decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Don Edwards?
I also would like to speak about the River Park Metro District. I know that the state allows it. In my mind, that doesn't mean that you have to use it. If this is worth developing, if the developer wants to take a risk and develop something to get money back, then the developer should take the risk. The city shouldn't get involved with that. Plus, and Enzer property, that's going to be developed. There's no question about that. I know there's a lot of resistance to having it developed. It's going to be developed, but it needs to be developed according to a plan. And we don't need to change the zoning rules to make taller buildings. And then the last part, this property is right at the intersection of Minral and Santa Fe. There is, it's my understanding, there are plans going on right now, studies going on, the whole Santa Fe corridor. And what's going to happen at that intersection of Minral and Santa Fe? The long-term plans, as I was told at a meeting that I went to a year ago, a year and a half ago, is that there's going to be flyovers. This property, if it gets developed and they put big buildings on there, is going to be right in the middle of those flyovers. Now, either they're going to have to be demolished and the flyovers are going to be put in, or it's going to complicate like heck the whole plan. So please, don't allow a metro district. Let them develop it themselves, take the risk themselves, and if they want to build it and then get some money from the CDOT, so be it. But it just doesn't make sense to me. I'm an engineer. It doesn't make sense to me to know that this is going to be something that is going to be coming on in the next few 10 years, five years. This just doesn't make sense to put something there at this particular point in time. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick Conley? Conley? Conley?
Just bad writing.
It's okay.
Patrick Conley, 2490 West Jameson Way, also here to speak in terms of the River Park development. A couple of things just to add on in terms of where the traffic is right now. Minral gets backed up in the afternoon for stretches, long stretches, over a half mile. You have people going through neighborhoods trying to get around it. In the morning, the students who go to Heritage, who live on the west side of the plat, it takes them sometimes 45 minutes to get to school on what is a very short drive. And I think that tax money that should be raised would be best used for either developing a flyover or coming up with some resolution regarding that intersection, because to add all those houses, all that retail development, is going to just exacerbate that problem. And I think it's something where, if tax money is going to be used, we shouldn't be using it to fund it for a developer. We should be using it to fund the infrastructure that we badly need, and then go on after that and develop the plan, because it will be developed at some point. But we need to just do logical steps on this, rather than just have something develop and have us actually pay for it. And then, as an aside, I drive around Littleton and Centennial all the time. There's a lot of empty commercial real estate right now, and do we need a lot more commercial real estate right now? I don't really know, but just something to think about. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Pam Chadbourne?
Good evening, city council. My name is Pam Chadbourne. I live a block and a half from here. So I've been going to the meetings about the so-called Envision Project, and I'm going to say what I want you to do is take out the future land use map. It is not mature. It is not ready, and it has not been explained to the people. And let me iterate what two topics have already come up. For the South Metro Housing Options divestment of all 71 single-unit properties, there could have been a trade study. That impacts the city, and it's in the city's interest and you as our elected representatives. It's your obligation to figure out the impact on the city of that divestment. That was an investment made years ago. It is a great one. Integrating incomes across the city is something that is precious and wonderful and not to be lost. There are alternatives for SMHO, for how they handle this. They're saying they're losing maintenance fund. Well, they could have looked at the five or 10 worst-maintained, or in the worst shape, and maybe divested those first. Maybe there would be 20. There are alternatives, though, and the claim that other cities, all of them in Denver, are doing this is false. So it's in the city's interest for the council to have demanded, and you guys did a breakfast with Schmo on this in February, so you knew about it, to look at alternatives and the impact on the city, and actually, that's your obligation to us. That was not done. No alternatives for this was done, and this is a precious resource that is so hard to get back. It takes decades. It is a great legacy, which is being lost and given away. And there is no plan here. What is their commitment to us about what they're going to do? None. Vague words, vague promises. So let's look at the metro district. When did you give us an alternative? Certainly, there is an alternative to that. The city could have said, "We're going to do the traditional infrastructure. You develop or do your part." When was that study presented? Never, never. And we deserve that. And finally, for the future land use map, have you explained to the people what the impact of this will be? The problem being solved there is not that we have an old zoning code, because that's fine. It works fine. It's very refined, and it made the city that people love. But what you're saying, I think the problem statement is, is, "Oh, developers, it's so hard for them. We need to make it easier. We're going to smear everything together, reduce the number of zones, and advance them about three or four stages of zoning all at once, and that serves no one but developers." Counsel, you need to serve the people and look at your legacy that we've inherited and pass that forward. That's not being done, and I want you to do that. Put the future land use map aside.
Thank you, Pam. Lynda Knupinski?
My name is Lynda Knupinski. I live in the 4th District. I just wanted to kind of talk really quickly about South Metro Housing Options and then the metro district really quick. And these are properties that have an opportunity of being consolidated. This is on Stern Parkway, and to the left here is Ralph Moody School, so you could probably build two or three apartment buildings. The next picture is on Lake Street. There's eight properties there that Schmo owns. And then here, this is on Gallup Street and Forest Hill Road, and you can, again, totally demolish these houses. The key point is that these are just 17 out of 71 properties. It is not known which properties will be on the list for demolition, and there are at least five more opportunities for consolidation and demolition of the properties and building high-density apartments. And what I did want to mention is that be ready to accept and defend this is a significant and huge change in policy for public housing in this city, and it's going to be a big fight. And then I just wanted to talk real quick about the metro district. You might not approve the proposed development or the changes in the zoning, and the service plan states, "Finance the public improvements that are part of an approved development plan." The developers, existing plans have not been approved by the council, and the existing plan specifically excludes assisted living facilities from being built. You need to rezone to do this, so I'm wondering whether this is premature, and also why you use South Park for water detention and water quality issues? Has a park been consulted? So I think I wanted to show you, in Littleton Village, the metro district. Here's an example of commercials, the Starbucks and the Dennis of Littleton. They pay $23,115.90 for Littleton Village, and with a tax rate of .050. So that's a huge amount, and it's a huge burden on some of the businesses. This is a residence arbitrarily chosen, a townhouse, and because of the metro district, they're paying $1,890 more every year based on that. So in conclusion, don't put the cart in front of the horse. Don't approve the metro district until you change the zoning on the property and give us a good idea of what you want to do in that property. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynda. Doug Clark?
I'm here about the metro district plan, item 6A on Enzer property. Approving this metro district plan on the north end of Enzer property, when the plan is based on the property being rezoned before the property is actually rezoned, is exactly akin to announcing the results of this November's election before the votes are counted. After all, you can always go back and change the announcement of who won the election after you count the votes, if you have to. And announcing early adds value to those you pick to be the winner. Who could possibly object to that? The metro district and the service plan are completely worthless unless the property is rezoned to what's specified in the plan. The financial plan, the capital improvements are all based on the property changing to what's shown in there, which they haven't gotten on rezone yet. In addition, the metro district will go bankrupt if the rezone isn't approved because it has no money and it can't get any money realistically without a rezone. The reality is that the metro district will incur costs just by existing. The metro district will incur costs by being created, and the metro district has no realistic way of getting the money if it actually follows the service plan, because page six of the service plan says the district will not incur debt until a successful rezone, and it will not levy property taxes until a successful rezone. The only realistic way the metro district has of getting money is through an advance from the developers, which is a debt. And that shows how it is that this provides value to the developer. We know this from High Land Improvement District. The developers hire themselves, since they're on the board, to provide services to the district. They sit on the board. There's no bidding requirements, but the district has no money to pay the developer, so the developers loan the district, an advance from the developer, money to pay themselves at a very high interest rate. That's a legal obligation that the district then has to pay, and the money comes from the future property owners that buy into the property in the district. Approving this metro plan that's based on a rezone before the rezone happens is akin to announcing the results of the rezone before you have the hearing. It shows us, citizens, what a sham the rezone process is. It ties your hands to what you can and cannot do. Your justification for turning this down, if you choose to, is because there is actually no way that the district can meet its financial obligations on the property the way the property sits. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all we have that have signed up. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Gloria?
I'm Gloria Shone from District 3, and I just wanted to share an experience of visiting the SMHO board after I got wind of the 71 properties that they were planning to get rid of, either by selling them or demolishing them. And before I went to the first meeting in July, I went out to their website to try to familiarize myself with their financial position and what had been going on in the meetings, and I found that the latest financials were for 2016, and the latest agendas and minutes were for April and May 2018. So I got hold of their executive director, Corey Reitz. We've had quite a correspondence going back and forth, and, you know, I've been to the last two meetings, and he's And he said he could update it. And when he did, though, he took off all the old stuff, so now it's just the current stuff. And so you can't make comparisons. So I asked him about that, and he said, "Well, we don't really even need to have a website. We don't have to post this." And that's one of the reasons I'm here, is I think that, I don't know if they have to, but I think they should, and I think the city should require that and have some oversight over what is going on there. It appears, and Reitz confirmed that, that these decisions they have made were not in open session. He said they might come out and take a vote in open session someday, but they haven't yet. So the first one I went to, the discussion was around contacting all but 14, I believe, of the 71 family groups that would be impacted. Where did that come from? I don't know that it was ever available to the public. And I think you, as the council, since you appoint those people, that I think there should be more oversight over not only what they're doing, but how they're doing it. So whether you want to have them post their information to the city website, that might not be a bad idea. It's up to you. But I just wanted to bring this to your attention, what I've experienced. And I just have a few seconds, but I don't think that the city should chip in over $10,000 to the Enzor redevelopment. I think that's unprecedented, and it's not something that we should entertain. They're supposed to pay impact fees. I don't think we're supposed to contribute to their development. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Okay, that takes us to consent agenda. Consent agenda items can be adopted by a simple motion. All ordinances must be read by title prior to a vote on the motion. Any consent agenda item may be removed at the request of a council member. Resolution 37, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the Arapahoe County Clerk Recorder and the City of Littleton regarding the conduct and administration of the November 5, 2019 coordinated election. Resolution 36 is authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between Douglas County Clerk and Recorder and the City of Littleton regarding the conduct and administration of the November 5, 2019 coordinated election. Resolution 35 is a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the Jefferson County Clerk and the Recorder and the City of Littleton regarding the conduct and administration of the November 5, 2019 coordinated election. Resolution 38 is approving the Windamer Trail subdivision improvement agreement. Resolution 41, approving an intergovernmental agreement regarding a 2019 Arapahoe County open space grant for Harlow Park improvements. Resolution 40 is approving an intergovernmental agreement regarding a 2019 Arapahoe County open space grant for option secondary at Whitman School playground renovation. Resolution 43 is a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement regarding a 2019 Arapahoe County open space grant for Reynolds Landing Phase 2 park improvements. Resolution 42 is a resolution approving an IGA with the Burns Center for an assessment of homelessness in coordination with the Cities of Inglewood and Sheridan and Arapahoe County. ID 19222 is a motion to cancel city council's regular meeting on November 5, 2019. And ID 192222 is approval of the July 16, 2019 regular meeting minutes. I need a motion, please.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve consent. Ready to vote? Karina.
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
And I just want to mention to council that the IGA on the Burns was approved last night by the Inglewood City Council, and they also received notice from Inglewood Public Schools that they are going to contribute $2,000. So our total keeps going down. Good support for that. It's a good thing. All right. So our next item of business is our general business item. This is a resolution, Resolution 39, approving the River Park Metropolitan District Service Plan. So we're going to have a presentation from staff. We'll also have a presentation from the applicant. And I think we want to make sure that we spend the time we need to understand the detail that's required for us to be able to make the decision we need to make tonight so that we are able to execute this properly, as opposed to the confusion that will naturally occur, given the fact that we're looking at a rezon that hasn't happened. So we're making a decision about a piece of property that is intent to ponder a rezon. So Jennifer, I'll let you unravel this Gordian knot. Thank you.
I'll give it my best. And I do have other members of staff here to answer questions as well, and we will have our consultant from Pinnacle here momentarily to answer questions.
Yes, on your mic.
I'm kind of short, sorry. All right. Well, what we have before you this evening is consideration of approval for a resolution deciding upon a River Park Metropolitan District, which we'll refer to as the Metro District, specifically their service plan. Just a brief background as to what metropolitan districts are. This is a type of special district. It sets up a financial mechanism, so a financing mechanism to construct public improvements. Public improvements could include installation of roads, water, sewer, landscaping, parks, recreational trails. Those are the types of public improvements that we're referring to. The legal basis for establishing a special district is set up in two places. One is initially with Title 32 of the Colorado Revised Statutes. And then specifically to Littleton, we have six criteria that are listed in Title 8, Chapter 11 of our code. Both of those entities and that criteria provides authority to levy taxes in the form of a mill levy within the district boundaries for items included specifically in the service plan. What metropolitan districts are not, or do not do, is they do not grant or modify zoning, that is by separate document. It does not obligate city financing in any way. It's an asset to current and future developers. So for example, if a developer on the property in question were to go away, the Metro District would still be in place. Improvements funded by property owners in the district boundaries is what can help for. It also provides permanent funding source for maintenance. So a portion of the mills that are being asked for would be used for ongoing maintenance. Metro District service plans specifically establish district boundaries. They limit the total debt that can be incurred by the Metro District. They set a maximum mill levy. Again, that's the property tax. And identifies potential public improvements. So there's a specific list of public improvements that the service plan or the Metro District will cover. And the financial analysis that sets the mill levies and estimates those public improvements is based on a development scenario. Specifically for the River Park Metro District, we are talking about a property that is 33.34 acres, and this is the property, part of the property located on the southwest corner of Santa Fe Drive and Mineral Avenue. The River Park Metro District does set up, would finance, construct, and maintain improvements that include new roads, water service, sewer service, drainage solutions for the entire property, landscaping, and a trail along the South Platte Park. What they're requesting is a $20 million maximum debt that would be payback using a 55-mill maximum levy. As I mentioned, the mills and the financing are based on a development scenario. That development scenario is what you see on the screen. This is calling for, right now, 317 apartments, 180 assisted living units, and 54,000 square feet of commercial. This is now what is being applied for in a PD amendment that will be coming before you, most likely in the next few months. When we, as staff and a city council, are asked to consider a Metro District, right now, the way Littleton Code is written, there are six criteria for you to consider when you're considering the service plan. Again, the service plan is the financial mechanism for this proposed development. Given that, what staff has determined, one, that there is sufficient existing and projected need for organized service in the area to be serviced by the proposed special district. Right now, there are no services there because the property is vacant. Services are not needed at this time for this. With the projected need, the development would require financing, construction, installation of public infrastructure. Second criteria in our code, the existing service in the area to be served by the proposed district is inadequate for present and project needs. As stated before, the site is currently unimproved, so any development that does occur would need to have service. Adequate service is not or will not be available to the area through other existing municipal or quasi-municipal corporations within a reasonable time and on a comparable basis. There are no other municipal or quasi-municipal corporation or districts who could provide services to this location. Fourth criteria, the proposed special district is capable of providing economical and sufficient service to the area within its proposed boundaries. The capital plan, based on the current scenario, identifies potential costs for the improvements that are indicated. The debt cap limit covers the anticipated cost and allows flexibility for changes in market conditions, our findings. Criteria number five, the area to be included in the special district has or will have the financial ability to discharge the proposed indebtedness on a reasonable basis. Based on the financial plan given to staff at this time, we believe that it could reasonably cover these costs and the debt. Criteria number six, the proposal is in substantial compliance with the city's comprehensive The Metro District itself does not establish zoning or approve a site plan. The way the Metro District Service Plan is written, there has to be an approved development plan. That approved development plan has to occur subsequent to the approval of the service plan, with this go through. So there are parts of our existing city comprehensive plan, which is actually made up of several different documents at this time. As we're all aware, we are going through the envisioned Littleton process and working on that comprehensive plan, but we do not have that at the current time. So what we have is the 2014 citywide plan and the plans that are listed as part of the comprehensive plan. And that is what we used as the basis of our findings, that it is in compliance with the city's comprehensive plan at this time. Therefore, city council action, you have a couple of different options. You can approve the proposed River Park Metropolitan District without condition or modification, as is. You can disapprove the service plan. You can conditionally approve the service plan, or you could table the discussion or continue it to a date certain. Staff recommendation at this time, based on the service plan and the Metro District being a financial mechanism, is to approve the resolution approving the service plan based on the current criteria that we have in the Littleton Municipal Code. And this concludes staff comments.
Any questions, council?
Not yet.
I have a question. Is there a reason we're seeing this prior to a rezon?
I'm going to let Anastasia do it. It has to do with the timing issue of how metropolitan districts need to be created at the state level.
Anastasia Urban, Development Services Manager with the Department of Public Works. Currently, our code very closely mirrors Title 32, which is the state statute. There are specific timing provisions for when council must consider a service plan, both stated in our code and the state code. So from the time that they submit a proposal, our Title 8, Chapter 11 specifies that we must schedule a consideration in front of council within a certain time period, which is why this date was set at a prior council meeting, I believe the July 16 meeting, in order to hear it at this date. So it's based specifically on the timing that they submitted the request for the service
Could they submit the same plan after a rezon? And meet a different election date requirement?
If there was action this evening to disapprove, for instance, and they went through the zoning process, they could resubmit an application for service plan consideration. Likely at a later date, it would be pushed to a future election, either spring 2020 or fall 2020. Even years are twice a year, and odd years are once a year in the fall.
There was a comment made earlier by a citizen regarding a $1.9 million contribution by the city. Would you mind clarifying that?
Sure. In the early drafts of the service plan, the developer did identify potential city costs that may be part of a cost share as part of this development, based on where we're at currently with the zoning documents and the subdivision submittal. Those costs are very early for the city to confirm and vet that that would be the appropriate share. Additionally, through the Metro District Service Plan Review, if the service plan were to be approved, there is no obligation for city funding whatsoever. So that was one of our specific revisions as part of our review to say, you know, please remove that as a city identified costs. Other costs could be unfunded potentially if the city does not fund the 1.9, more or less. That's not tied to the service plan. Any city funding would be further defined through the subdivision, final subdivision plat, and a subdivision improvement agreement to be reviewed and approved by city council at a future date.
Okay, so we are not approving anything like that?
There is no city funding contained in the service plan.
Okay. There was another comment this evening regarding a decision on this. If council were to approve this, that it would tie our hands. I'm assuming that means tie our hands regarding rezon decision. Give a little bit of input on that, please, with the city attorney.
I think what the citizen was getting at, would it basically force your hand in approving the amendment that would come before you? And the answer is no. It would not.
They're completely non-related.
Completely. Again, the Metro District does not establish zoning. Their financial plan is based on a development scenario at this point because we do not have an approved plan.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Kyle?
To follow up on that, so what would happen to the Metro District if it is approved tonight and a rezon or a site plan were not approved in the future?
It would remain inactive and unable to do anything.
And regarding that 1.9 million, how does that affect, or how does that play into the quadrant road that we've been discussing to help with the traffic in that intersection?
In the early drafts, that was an estimated cost the developer prepared. That could be the additional lanes that may be required for the quad road. Based on where we're at with the traffic study and the subdivision plat, the city's not in a position to confirm what level of funding is appropriate yet for this project.
So the developer would have to put a road there, and to meet our standards, you know, they're saying add 1.9 million to get to that. That sounds to me like it's substantially less than the, what, $9 million we heard, how much it would cost to put one how much it would cost to put one in just on our own?
As drafted, it was presented that that would be the additional cost for the outside lanes, plus some ancillary costs that we still have to review and work through the detailed designs of, you know, construction disturbance and things like that, or, you know, what's a proportionate share for erosion control measures. But again, we're not at a point in the detailed design drawings to confirm that that's an appropriate cost. And so specifically, again, the metro district doesn't approve our funding, but I can't comment to even say 1.9 is appropriate.
Yeah, whatever the number is, it just sounds like we actually could, you know, save money for the city for having them put a road in there.
No, it'll be further reviewed with a complete traffic study to see what the developer proportionate costs would be, you know, related to their traffic and then how that works with the quad road proposal, correct?
Thanks.
Mayor Perot?
Cool, thank you. So just clarification for me one more time on the process. So if, should we not approve it tonight, and then eventually as rezoning does happen, the developer can come back for reconsideration again?
So a couple of things on that. The reason that the applicant submitted the metro district when they did was in an attempt to make the November state required election to establish a metro district. So that's the reason you see this before the zoning at this point.
Would you say that again, a little slower and louder into the mic? Sorry.
See how I feel, Peggy?
I can't get close enough, sorry. The reason that the applicant submitted the request for the formation of a metro district at the time that they did was in an effort to meet the November election deadline to establish a metro district. So should council not approve it this evening, they would not make that election date. They have two opportunities in 2020 because it is an even year that they could come before you, say, the beginning of the year after the PD amendment is looked at.
So you said that 2020, there will be two opportunities. Is that what you just said?
Yes, correct. I just needed to confirm that, yes.
And a rezoning process would take, what, six months?
Right now, where we are in their rezoning process, they are actually scheduled right now to go to Planning Commission with their proposed plan development amendment on the 9th of September, and I believe coming before council for a second hearing on the 27th?
October 15th.
October, no.
Uh, 1st.
October, October 1st is tentatively the council second reading.
Second reading, yes. So October 1st is when we are-
That would be our public hearing.
Correct.
For rezoning.
Yes.
So, city attorney, so you agree with that information too, that they can come back anytime, twice possibly in 2020?
In regard to the establishment of a metro district, yes. They have two opportunities in 2020 to bring forward a new service plan to get approval from city council.
Thank you.
And that has to happen approximately 90 to 120 days prior to the election.
Okay.
It would have to come to council.
Thank you.
Quick question about, since you brought up the election, can the timing of the election be part of the criteria that we have? Is that there or can we consider that or no?
The timing of the state election?
City attorney, of the election for the metro district. Can we consider when they want to get on? Can we say, oh, we, you know, we will put it off later because, or we have to approve it tonight or we have to push it off? Can we even consider what the election is?
There's no requirement, other than the fact that as soon as they submit a service plan, it starts kicking into certain dates, but there's no requirement that our council necessarily tries to fit them in on any certain election cycle. It's really whenever the applicant decides to bring their-
Right, it's not something we should even consider.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, that's what I was getting at.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Seems to be a little premature with the zoning. So I'm just curious why staff is recommending approval on this. I mean, they're not going to be collecting any money between now and by the time they get some tenants in there. So what's, other than the election, why are we trying to push this through?
I'm going to defer to city manager, Ralph.
Excuse me. The staff is not trying to push anything through here. I think we're trying to respond to the application that was made here by the property owner, who happens to be also the developer here. It might be to the council's advantage here to allow the developer, the property owner, to make a presentation here, and then maybe some of these questions might be answered.
Yeah, we've got them scheduled to make a presentation, so. Any other questions from council? Councilmember Fay?
You forgot me.
Well, I thought you-
We never forget you, Carol.
Go ahead, sorry. Two things. I thought I was hearing council member Schlachter propose that this was going to be for the intersection of Mineral and Santa Fe, that this would mean the whole intersection would cost 1.9 million rather than 9 million. No. Okay. Second thing is, I heard you say that it seemed to you that the comprehensive plan, the current one, was being met. And it's, I remember a lot of, to use Paul's word, fuss about TOD in that. But I don't see anything about TOD in, and I don't have any evidence that that is being considered. How do you rationalize those two things?
I'm going to let Anastasia answer your first question, and then I'll answer your second one. To clarify the other costs of the 1.9 million, that was, again, an estimate of cost of what the additional lanes could be for construction of a quadrant road within this development by constructing a quadrant road in this development, or potentially, there's an option to either construct one on the north or in addition to construct one on the north through the RTD property as well, that we consider somewhat of an interim, not quite short term, but an interim solution for intersection improvements for Santa Fe and Mineral. And interim, you know, the estimate is if the quad road combination, one, two, or either, were to be constructed, again, that could potentially serve intersection relief for 10 to 15 years before the traffic grows to a point where a grade separated interchange would be required. And that cost of total improvements is estimated to be 75 to 90 million dollars. So again, the quad road is short slash interim improvement for the intersection. But again, it's an opportunity to coordinate with this property as well at this time.
Thank you.
Does that work for the first part of your question?
I guess.
Okay. Second part of your question, in terms of compliance with the comprehensive plan. So the way our criteria currently reads, it states, is it in substantial compliance with the comprehensive plan? And in your, in the staff communication that we provided to you, we listed out some of the criteria that we pulled from the 2014 citywide plan, which is our current comprehensive plan. And that identified several different goals and policies that talked about putting development into activity centers. And the Mineral-Santa Fe intersection is one of those activity centers. So this is putting development at one of the activity centers. Therefore, it meets that part of the comprehensive plan. It also talked about having public and private investment in these activity centers. The metro district would allow for that private investment at these activity centers. So you would say that it meets that criteria. Another part of the comprehensive plan that is referred to, I should say, in the citywide plan, it refers to the South Santa Fe Corridor Study. And attached in your self-communications, there is a diagram that is basically a summary of recommendations that came out of the South Santa Fe Corridor Study. And that outlines specific recommendations for the area encompassed by the River Park Service Plan. And those specific recommendations get to councilmember Fay, what you were referring to as transportation-oriented development. Transportation, hang on, I have a note here. Transit-oriented development, so TODs, by definition are compact, walkable, pedestrian-oriented, mixed-use communities centered around high-quality transit. The interpretation of the development scenario as a TOD is being reviewed right now. So does it meet that part of the comprehensive plan substantially? That would be a determination. Another aspect of it is, is it pedestrian-connected? Specifically on that diagram, I know it is very difficult to read that diagram.
Is that something you can put on here for everyone to see? Or we can, or maybe after the applicant presents, bring that up?
Just there. On here. Yeah.
For what page?
Oh, do we have the doc cam? Hang on, we're going to try to put on the doc cam. Thank you. We're making Tyler work. Run, Tyler, run. Burn it over.
You got extended. Anastasia?
All the way up.
It may be difficult to read, but it's on page eight of the packet.
A page, is it?
Page eight.
Page eight of?
Of the staff report.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, that's better.
Went from two font up to four.
Okay, we're going to try to pull it up. But specifically on this diagram, there are a couple different paragraphs that do specifically apply to this piece of property. One of the paragraphs, not that you can read it, is on the left side of the corridor there, and it states, "The Enzer PD includes commercial, business park, and high-density residential uses." Just for clarification, the Enzer PD refers to the existing Santa Fe River Park PD, which was adopted in the?
1985.
1985. That is the current zoning for the property. What the developer is requesting is a PD amendment. And again, I have to tread very lightly because the PD amendment is a quasi-judicial issue coming before you, so I can't go into specifics. But going back to this document, says, "The Enzer PD includes commercial, business park, and high-density residential uses. While the mix of uses is appropriate, the location of these uses should be reconfigured to place greater densities within walking distance of the rail station and service retail at the Mineral-Santa Fe Drive intersection." Again, that is a paragraph that is on this, and we're trying to get it, so it's bigger. And we're going to make Tyler work again and go to the computer that set the thing. There we go. So Anastasia, yeah, if you go down a little bit, it is one of the paragraphs that is to the left of the River Park area. So go down a little bit more. It's where the big circle is. So it's just to the left, yes, right there. So the service plan development scenario does have the mix of uses. There, a lot of it is within walking distance. So it meets that criteria. Number four, and then at the bottom of that paragraph, it says, "See number 14 and number 15." So if you scroll over to the right and go up, there's number 14, Mineral Station TOD. Encourage transit-oriented development around the Mineral Light Rail Station, including greater densities. 12 to 16 dwelling units per acre for commercial and residential uses north and south of Mineral Avenue. Attractive pedestrian connections need to be provided to connect new development with Pedestrian connections are yet to be determined. And then number 15, commercial activity centers focus retail commercial development at the three major arterial highway intersections, and this is one of them, so it does meet that criteria. And then there is an additional paragraph, I believe, if you go back down to the circle, it is on the right side of the circle. And it states, it's that paragraph, yeah, right there. "The property within a quarter-mile radius of the Light Rail Station should be planned for transit-oriented development, including high-density residential land uses. This prominent intersection is too valuable for surface parking. RTD parking lots should eventually be consolidated into parking structures to allow for infill transit-oriented development." The development scenario does show surface parking at this time, so one could say that it doesn't meet that. So to answer your question, it is in compliance with parts of the comprehensive plan as it stands now.
Thank you. Council, other questions?
I do. When you, it does mention that the RTD parking lot should be eventually. How long is eventually? I mean, it's been that for a long doggone time.
So we've actually had some really good conversations with RTD, and we've had some conversations with the developer of this property about parking garages and partnering with RTD. We're just not far enough along in those conversations, and RTD is very interested in this but doesn't have the money. We don't have the money on our own, the developer doesn't have the money on their own, but there may be a way through this metro district that partnerships could be formed and it funded.
Thank you.
Is the applicant next?
Yes.
Thank you.
A light. A little too much for you?
Mayor, council, thank you. Tyler Carlson, managing partner of Evergreen Development. We are the property owner. We purchased this property from Mr. Enzer in December of 2017, so we've owned it for quite a while now. We actually worked on it for about a year and a half prior to that. So this is three years in the making. Needless to say, we're very excited to be here because this property, as you mentioned, mayor, is a Gordian knot of a deal. There's a lot of complexity to it. And I would like to publicly thank your staff, you know, they've been fantastic. A lot of them came into this project kind of midway through because they were hired in the last, you know, 12 months, and their level of engagement with us has been very, very impressive. Doesn't mean that everything is easy, there's a lot of challenges here, but they have been prompt, they've been responsive, they've been great communicators, and they've been, I believe, great stewards for the city. So I want, I do want to recognize them because they have met with us probably more than they would like, but they're really great. And regardless of what happens tonight, I would stand by that because we have felt the spirit of partnership with staff. I would like to respond just real quickly to some of your comments and to some of the comments from the public, and want to thank them for coming. This is democracy, and this is why we have these events. So it's fantastic, and I'm really glad that there's a scout here because I took my own scout troop to a hearing a couple of months ago, and it's not the most exciting thing, so I'm glad he's staying awake. I think the two biggest issues is why now? And there's really two reasons why we're here before you tonight. One is that the state statutory requirement for a November election requires us to have a hearing really tonight, or maybe your next hearing, to be able to make that agenda. And the reason to make that election, because of the state process that follows, it has to go through the court system to be approved, and then the electors are elected in. And the reason why it's important for us to get this approved during the November election is after working out for three years, we would like to start construction early next year, and having the financing vehicle for the public infrastructure is important. If we wait until the November election, that means the district won't be legally formed and have a board meeting and can issue debt till really next fall. And so we're setting the project back, you know, almost a year, you know, nine months, and we don't want to wait nine months because there are finite durations to investment cycles. The other issue actually concerns your plans. And it wasn't brought up by staff, but as you probably know, your public works department has submitted for TIP funding, which is the funding to pay for the additional quad road through the RTD property. TIP funding, which comes from the state and the feds, requires matching funds. By approving the metro district tonight, you are approving the financing vehicle for $10 million of the matching funds that can be then used to leverage your TIP approval. If you don't approve us tonight, which is within your jurisdiction, then your case that you have matching funds in hand is substantially weaker. And frankly, you won't have those matching funds in hand until the district is in place. So, it may seem like it is the cart before the horse. The reality is, is this cart has to run ahead of the horse for you guys to maintain your position in the TIP cycle and to have the strongest case for, for leveraging, you know, our project funds for your match. And it also puts us in a position so the district is formed so that when we get, hopefully, the zoning approved, and then following that SDPs approved, that we'll be able to start construction next year. I would also say that, as staff mentioned, when you put together a service plan, and I've done dozens of these, I'm on the board of several metro districts right now, the initial financial plan is a point in time, a projection of how you can finance the bonds. What is in that financing plan has never been built in the history of mankind. What you want to do is show there's a plausible path under a current or proposed zoning case to build enough real property, to provide enough taxes to pay for the infrastructure that the district is authorized and obligated to pay for. And so, what we actually get permitted from you is many months in advance. And even the zoning won't grant 317 apartment units and 54,000 square foot of commercial. That'll allow a broad range of uses. Following that will be site development plans that will go through the rigors of the staff process. And what the exact unit count is, the exact GLA will be subject to the end users and what gets approved by your, by your city. So, to, to think that a financing plan is, you know, the, you know, the ultimate build-out scenario is just, it's not reality. And that wasn't the intention, the intention of the Special District Act. The Special District Act wanted a service plan to have a plausible methodology for financing the bonds when they were, you know, going to be in the future. If you can't provide a plausible way to get there, then you shouldn't be authorizing it. But if there is a plausible way, then, then that's what you're, you're deciding to, that's what you are approving. So, I'm not sure if that was clear or not. It's, it's hard to respond on the fly to some of these things. But those, that's the big reason why we're here tonight. I do want to address a couple other issues just real quickly, and that is the fact that your city is already chock full of special districts. And they provide a significant number of services already for your citizens. So, this is nothing new. South Metro Fire, South Suburban Parks and Rec, Southwest Metro Water and Sand, Platte Canyon Water and Sand, Colibine Water and Sand, and the Athan Grove Business District are all existing districts within your city. And the reason why a district is created is to fill an infrastructure or service void. That's why the special act was created in 1949. You know, these districts have been around for 70 years, and over the 70 years, there's like one one-thousandth of a percent or less that have ever failed because of the prudence of the state statute and the prudence of the cities that have approved the service plans. The benefits of using a special district are, are very simple. It is a financing tool, especially when it is a commercial district where there's no homeowners, and there's not going to be a resident who gets a tax bill that's jumped up by 30% because of our, of our metro district. This is a completely 100% commercial district that's going to be owned by sophisticated commercial property owners. And so, the reason why we're using it is because it lowers our financing costs. Because if, if these $10 million of improvements would be financed with a traditional construction loan and debt and equity, the costs of financing are probably more than twice that of a metro district bond, which is tax-exempt and allows for a 30, 25 to 30-year amortization. So, just like a home loan, if you have to pay the home loan back in five years, the amortization schedule, those payments are very aggressive and very tough to pay. If you can spread that out over 30 years, which is what district financing does, it allows for a more affordable payment schedule for public infrastructure. And similarly, because it's tax-exempt, it lowers our interest rate costs significantly. So, what will actually happen is by using a district to finance your public infrastructure, the occupancy costs of your tenants and residents will actually be lower than if we were to do it privately. That's the whole point of this, is to have lower infrastructure costs to lower the occupancy costs for our tenants because we want them to be successful. And if we were to privately finance it, then it would not, the, the cost of the financing would be significantly greater. The infrastructure is going to cost what it is. The roads are going to be what it is, the pipes are going to be what they are, the trail is going to be what it is. But what we're talking about is the cost of financing. And if we can bring those costs of financing down, we can make the rents more affordable for the residents, and we can make the occupancy costs for the retail tenants more affordable as well. You know, the big benefit of the district from an infrastructure standpoint, and I'll show you some slides that illustrate it, is that we're solving, you know, four significant regional problems that we're paying for. The city's not paying for, the district is paying for. One is the stormwater issues at the intersection of Mineral and Santa Fe. As you guys know, during a hundred-year flood, Jackass Gulch floods that intersection, which is a holy nightmare. And we're going to be building a 90-foot-wide, huge detention facility along the south side of Mineral Avenue, funded by the district, to solve that problem. The second is due to climate change, the wetlands and the Platte River open space are drying. At the request of the South Suburban Parks and your own Public Works Department, we are going to be putting a wetlands mitigation system in to take our stormwaters and filter them through the open space in a series of what we're calling beaver ponds to improve the amount of, to increase the amount of water that flows through those wetlands to keep them intact. Because if we don't, they're going to continue to dry, and the native species that live in those wetlands immediately west of our property will leave. And that's not our problem, it's frankly not. It's not, it's not a problem we created, it's not a problem that you created, it's a problem our whole globe has created. And this is a small thing that we're doing to help be sensitive to the open spaces adjacent to us. The third thing is improving regional trail connectivity from the residential neighborhoods to the east through our property on the south side of Mineral to the Platte River open space. Right now, we're a missing gap in a sidewalk trail system because there is no sidewalk and trail on the south side of Mineral. We'll be connecting that east-west corridor, and we'll also be connecting to the south to the future development of the remainder of the Enzer property, which is facilitating the city's interconnected trail system goals. And then lastly, the quad road. You know, we are your catalyst for the quad road. You know, like it or not, you know, we're the ones coming to the table with a development plan, with a proposal to help finance this quad road, which is going to solve the city's number-one infrastructure problem that you have on your plate. It's the number-one source of complaints. I have sat in that traffic. My business partner, Jeff, drives through that intersection almost every day because he lives to the, to the west on Mineral. So, we understand the challenges associated with it. And approving the metro district tonight will provide the matching funds so we can advance that ball. You know, this, this proposal tonight did not happen in a vacuum. This is a result of a year of integration and, and coordination with CDOT and your staff. And we're, again, we're really excited to be here. So, jumping in with my formal presentation, these are the boundaries. I think everyone knows where the property is, 34 acres. These are, you know, we're going to be building some wet utilities. Those are, these are part of what the district will be constructing that include water and sewer that will be done in coordination with the South Sanitation District. We will be relocating the existing Inglewood ditch, which is a huge benefit to the City of Inglewood. I realize you're not the City of Inglewood, but anytime you have an opportunity to pipe an open-channel ditch to eliminate water loss to both cat tails and to evaporation, it's a huge win for that water system. So, we're happy to partner with the City of Inglewood in that regard. Again, we're constructing the 90-foot-wide Jackass Gulch detention facility along Mineral Avenue, which will help to solve the stormwater problems at the intersection. This is a quick graphic of the wetlands rehabilitation that we will be constructing to the west of the property, which has been done in concert with South Suburban. And so, they have been fully involved and engaged in this process.
And that's outside your...
It is outside our property, which is unusual. Normally, you detain everything on-site, but we very intentionally went off-site with this to help facilitate the wetlands rehab.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is another shot of the wetlands rehab and the beaver ponds to the west of the property. Then the quad road. The quad road has required some significant changes to our initial plans. We initially had the roadway alignment for Nichols Avenue, which is at east-west street, much further south, which was in harmony with the existing PD. We moved it significantly further north to help facilitate the quad road and to allow for the installation of all the, the traffic mitigation that will go on with its construction. And then this is a table that's in your service plan that talks about who will be ultimately the owner and the maintainer of the public improvements. There are a couple of TBDs in here because we have not yet resolved with staff who will be maintaining the Jackass Gulch, the stormwater, and the beaver pond wetland improvements. As a district, we are willing to do that, and we have the budget to maintain that within our mill levy. But obviously, since it's, the beaver ponds, for example, are on city property, and South Suburban is involved, you know, you guys may want to maintain it as part of your ecological program within the city. So, that's, doesn't have to be resolved today, but there are a few, a few things where we have not yet resolved. You know, long-term, you know, the district for sure will be maintaining Jackass Gulch, which is, again, a regional pond. We will also be maintaining, long-term, all the walkways and fencing and trails on our property and the landscaping and the irrigation, along with the, the off-site detention and water quality improvements that flow through the project. The total budget for these is around $10 million. Obviously, we always put some pretty significant contingency on any budget this early on. And the by-others, as referenced before, is those are the marginal costs with adding, with, for adding the additional lanes as signals, and signals, excuse me, for the quad road improvements. The reason why they are by-others is because the, who will pay for those is yet to be determined. It could be paid for by the metro district, it could be paid for by the South Enzer property, it could be paid for by RTD, it could be paid for by CDOT, it could be paid for out of your TIP funding. It's a TBD because, again, we don't have all the answers today because we don't have the full engineering, we don't have the full approvals from CDOT yet. But we wanted to recognize and isolate, for staff's benefit and for your benefit, what those marginal costs are associated with going to the quad road, which is, again, widening the street out and adding some additional signals. Again, this is the plan that the financing underwriting is based upon. This is not being approved tonight. You know, we had to, we had to put something, we had to throw spaghetti noodle on the wall and run it through our bond analysis, something that was plausible under a potential TOD-type scenario. And we expect future refinements, you know, to this plan, but I just, we just wanted to show you. Now, where does the revenue come from? You know, based upon the current underwriting, and I apologize for the shift in the text, but basically, a third, 30% of it is coming from the multifamily portion of the project, 11% from the senior, and the retail is approximately 50%, 60% of the revenue. Half of that is coming from the private sales tax, the PIF, and half of that's coming from the property tax. So, the retail is obviously very important, you know, to this project. And that's why I am particularly sensitive to making sure we get the retail right in our mixed-use zone on the hard corner because we want the retailers to thrive. And we don't want to create a plan, or a future zoning, rather, that jeopardizes their ability to be, to be successful. And that's very hard to do, as you guys probably know, in a TOD. There is lots of failed retail in TOD. Generally, there's lots of really successful residential, and there's lots of really terrible retail. And I think Inglewood City Center is a very good example of what not to do because that retail is turned over, there's a ton of vacancy, it's being currently redeveloped, and it's what happens when you get retail wrong in a TOD concept. So, I am determined to work very closely with staff to make sure we get the retail right so it can thrive, and we're not looking at empty storefronts down the road in the, in the name of TOD. Bond proceed summary, so what the, again, with the, the example of what could happen within the district is illustrated. It's approximately an $11 million bond. You know, $8.5 million would flow to the actual project, and netted out of that is obviously capitalized interest, debt service reserve, and costs of issuance. You know, again, the reason why there's such a large capitalized interest and debt service reserve is that the bond funds would be used to build the infrastructure, and then there's a reserve to get the project built and leased up. So, just like any construction loan, you have to have reserve in there so that they can service itself until you're completed with construction. So, with that, I will now turn the time over briefly to our good attorneys. They wanted us to run through very quickly some of the statutory requirements for forming a metro district, so you guys are up to speed on why we think this is all legal. Minor detail.
Good evening. My name is Mary Ann McGee with McGee &amp; Becker, and I'm standing in for Megan Becker tonight because she had another hearing up north. And I'm really excited to be here before you today, and I don't know if you saw me getting all excited back there, but I love the questions that you're asking. I think they're so relevant and appreciate your attention to the details of this kind of process. I've been working on organizing special districts since 1982, so this isn't the first time I've been before, Counsel, to answer these kinds of tough questions. And I think the question of timing is one that comes up frequently. Back in 1982, '86, '90, '92, you could organize a district in a lineal fashion with the land use process. Since the requirements for public hearings have gotten longer, for the election cycles have gotten where you can only go once in odd-numbered years and twice in even-numbered years, we're now all out of cycle with the land use process. And I don't think that was intentional, it's just the consequence of different constitutional changes and state legislative changes that happened without regard to the land use process. Unfortunately, for a development to be as successful as you want it to be, we have to be sensitive to that process. And so, that's why the applicant put in its application when it did, looking at where the zoning potentially will go to hearing here, and having the district be organized almost coincident with that sets the project up for financial success and, or best for financial success. And that's why we're here, what might seem out of sequence. On the other hand, the service plan itself does have the protections in it so that if there is a very different plan than what is in there and what you approve in your zoning, the district can't go forward to finance anything until it does a service plan amendment. Now, that service plan amendment can be done very quickly. It's not, doesn't take the same amount of time as the organization process. And so, again, if the zoning results in a different plan, that would trigger and require a different kind of finance plan in that service plan, an amendment can be processed quickly, and again, the project postured for the best financial success, which I think is what you're hoping for when you make all of these approvals. So, just to give more explanation, does anybody have any questions about that, the timing process, or why it's so important?
Counsel, more questions? Quick question, just on that. So, I want to just make sure I heard you there. So, if this plan were whatever it's going to be, because we don't know what it is yet, but if, if it is, does not go through, but yet a metro district was approved, and then you come back with another plan of some sort, the, the city still has a chance to review that as far as the maintenance plan, is that correct?
If I understand your question, is that if there's a very different development plan that gets zoned, would the district come back and redo the service plan? Is that your question?
Yes.
Yeah, the answer is, if it's significant in terms of affecting the finance plan numbers, then it would, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And where you look to see that process in the service plan is it does refer to an approved development plan. And so, the district can't move forward until there is an approved development plan. And so, that's kind of the reference point. So, when you do approve that approved development plan, which is your zoning, when you redo that zoning, that's when we'll take a look and see where we're at. Okay? And again, it's what is the district going to finance? It has a very simple mission, and that is to finance what you approve. Is there any other questions about that? Yes, ma'am?
I think I want to ask that question again. Sorry. So, you stated that the service plan amendment, so if you were to make an amendment, if the service plan was to be approved this evening, but then an amendment would be warranted for either because of a modification to the actual application and the rezoning, or perhaps there's other reasons why it would need an amendment? What is the process for that amendment? Because you stated that it would be simple or easy or not as long. So, can you talk about the process of an amendment?
Yes, I can. First, I'd like to talk about the process of organization, which this is just the beginning of that process in terms of the timeline. And so, once the service plan's approved by counsel, then we need to take a petition to district court. Then there's another published hearing, and then there's a court hearing. And then the court orders the election, and then there's more publication, and then there's an election. And then after the election, you take those results and you go back to the court. And so, that's why that process is so long. For a service plan amendment, once the district exists, it just needs to take that, the, the service plan and come back with an amendment, work with the city staff again, and then have a published public hearing, and come back before you. So, so like within six, eight weeks, if everybody's on the same page, and I, I'm assuming once the zoning is approved, that staff would be working with the applicant to make sure you're on the same page, then that's when the plan could come back through efficiently.
And just one, one quick plausible, I mean, scenario is if, if, for example, you ultimately approved a zoning that had, you know, zero retail in it. Say you said, "We want 100% residential project." I don't think that was going to happen, but obviously, if 50% of the service plan's, you know, projected potential revenue is from retail, then we need to come back and amend the service plan with a new financial plan, a new projection that said, "Okay, is there a new pathway to funding all this infrastructure without any retail?" So, that, that would be, I guess, a scenario where there's a significant deviation from the plan that would require us to come back before you because we can't transact the, the potential plan as previously approved.
So, significant... So significant variance is that it's still just an amendment? It would not be this plan no longer applies because of the significant change? So the significance is not a factor in the amendment as an option, is what I'm hearing? If there's a significant change to the plan, it would still go through an amendment process, not a whole new plan?
Correct. And again, the plan anticipates that possibility. So it is not unusual to be at this point before a city council or county commissioner saying, we are asking you to approve the plan that's in front of you with with the assumptions that are there, have us move through the organization process. And if it turns out in the land use process that there is a very different development plan approved, that we would, at the point the district exists, come back and amend that plan. And and again, it postures the district and the development to be able to execute quickly on the financing once all the other approvals the council needs to make on the land use side are in place and doesn't result in a delay that could be five, six months, which doesn't sound like a long period of time. But when you're trying to execute a commercial project, it is a long time. Another thing I'd like to say is, and Tyler did mention the tip, so I won't repeat that, but also to have the entity exist as he's negotiating with his potential development partners in the project, they know the the residential developer, the commercial developer, they can pick up that service plan, they can look at it, and they can understand what's the limit on the property tax? What is the PIF going to look like? What kind of financing is going to happen here? It's one thing for him to share that with them. It's another to have the approved plan. Now, again, the land use plan can change, and if the land use plan changes, then we amend the plan. But it would happen very quickly with coincident with your zoning and again, facilitate those conversations with the potential other developers so the project is a success. Any other questions about that? Then the last piece is transparency. So what I'm talking about in terms of timing on organization does relate to the transparency piece because if everything goes in accordance with Plan A schedule, which is the district gets organized in November, the zoning is approved before the end of November, well then where the district is at is it can impose a mill levy. The importance of imposing that mill levy in November of 2019 for a development that's going to happen in 2020 is that's a piece of our transparency because people know the district exists when it's certified a mill levy and it can and it's picked up on those property tax records so that anyone who's due diligencing the project, whether you're going to be a commercial developer there, you're going to be a lender there, or you're just interested in the project, it totally reveals the district's existence. Does anybody have any question about that?
I have a question not exactly related to that. More back to the question of substantial change.
Okay.
The land is currently zoned for combination of retail and commercial and residential. What what you're asking for in this district is based on the what you'll be asking for in the rezone in terms of the split between the commercial, retail, stuff like that. So if if I'm just shooting out there, if the rezone does not get approved, then but we put the metro district on the property, then is the existing zoning, is it in such a shape that you would need to amend or the metro district? Or would it be applicable?
I would defer to Tyler as the developer as to what he would think the densities would be.
Well, and I know it's speculation, but because it is rezoned, it's or it is zoned property for.
Ms. Mayor, your staff actually preempted that. And there's explicit language in the service plan that does not allow us to take this metro district and build using the existing zoning. I think we all agree with all levels of staff that the current zoning is broken and wonky and doesn't match the current, it's functionally obsolescent. So staff was good to catch that scenario. And it it says it, you know, the old zoning cannot be an approved plan. So we can't kind of pull a fast one on you, you know, get the district approved and then rescind our zoning and just go on our merry way with 1985 zoning. We have to go through in good faith with staff and you on a new zoning package.
Thank you. Other questions?
Thank you. I wanted to just reflect on one of the comments made about district bankruptcy and if the district is organized and there is a delay in the development and where would the district be in incurring expenses? I think Jennifer had mentioned inactive status for districts, and it is the case that districts can elect into inactive status in those circumstances. And so then they don't have board meetings, they don't have to comply with statutory requirements because they're not taxing, they're not issuing debt, they're not meeting, they're not doing anything. And so there would not be any extraordinary expense incurred if that was the path, and it took a little longer to get to the end. Is there any questions about that? Okay, so let's see if I can use the technology, maybe. Okay, so in terms of transparency and accountability, I just wanted to touch on the fact that a special district is a local government. It does have to comply with all the open meeting laws, Open Records Acts, the election code in terms of how it conducts its elections. It has the requirement to comply with local government audit laws and budget laws. And it does have an obligation to disclose the fact that it exists with transparency notices that are recorded on the property and also filed in different divisions of the government. Also, most recently, the legislature has now elected to compel districts to have websites and to post their meeting notices, minutes, such things on the websites. And so with the new technology that's available, to be transparent is getting easier for special districts. In addition to the statutory requirements, the service plan also includes the requirement to have an annual report filed with the city, no later than September 1 of each year, to work with the developer to make sure a notice is provided to potential purchasers. And obviously, Tyler's in direct contact with those potential purchasers, and we'll make sure that happens. And then again, referencing the recording of the notice, the districts exist. The service plan does have limitations in it. The debt issuance limit is $20 million. There is a maximum aggregate mill levy that's for operations, maintenance, and debt of 55 mills that would adjust if the statutory assessment ratios adjust for the property uses. The city is never responsible for district debt. All debt has to be issued in compliance with the Tabor Amendment to the Constitution. And if the district is issuing privately placed debt, there is a requirement that there's an external financial advisor certification. Does anybody have a question about what an external financial advisor certification is?
What is it?
Okay. See, it seems so familiar to me. But what it is, is that when you have a developer and a district, frequently when you're issuing debt, the board members are nominees of the developer on the board. And so it it helps to have the advice of those who are independent to the developer in determining what should be the terms of the debt and what should be the interest rate on the debt. And with privately placed debt, sometimes the developer is receiving and holding that debt. Sometimes it's being privately placed with an institution, and there's not as much market interaction in that transaction as if you're going out and selling bonds in $5,000 increments, right, where you can just go out in the market and do that. So what we do is we retain someone who's independent to the transaction, who evaluates the price and interest rates and terms of debt in the market, and then reviews the terms of that debt and advises the board in writing that whether the terms are or are not reasonable for that transaction. So that's the reason for that.
And maybe this is for Reed or for city attorney or city manager. It seems like our other districts, they come, when they have to replace a board member, they come to us for approval of a particular member. Is that true here also?
Not for a metro district, no.
Not for metro district. Okay, thank you.
Can I just add a general question on this $20 million? You know, with Evergreen's participation of low over, you know, 8.7 million dollars, you know, that's the limit. Do you see, do you see going up to that limit? Or do you just handle it up until 9 million or whatever, and then and then the mill, the mills go down? And how does that work?
Good question. So again, the anticipated budget right now for the public improvements is $10 million. We gave a greater debt issuance threshold than we normally do because of the regionality of the site, because of the potential, you know, future partnership with the Enser Property to the south, future potential partnership with the RTD property to the north, obviously, you know, the city and South Suburban to the west. You know, this this site sits at the center of a lot of action. And what we wanted to do was to have the ability within the district to to enter into partnerships with these other property owners in the future to take on additional projects. You know, one project, you know, could be improved, you know, connectivity to the light rail station. You know, one project could be, again, improve, you know, parks or trail connections to the south. I mean, there's any number of things that because of where this property is located, you would want the ability to have the debt authorization to do it because, you know, otherwise you have to go back and modify the overall service plan. So it was an attempt by us and staff to create some flexibility for these future partnerships. And the service plan actually even talks about that, that there will, there's that potential in the future, which we thought was valuable because the future is going to change and especially with the tip cycle funding and with RTD's potential redevelopment at some point in the unknown future of its property. We wanted this to be a flexible tool that could address those regional needs.
I have a follow up question to that. So the the debt that you are financing here is to address the service, the metro district service plan that you've presented here. But you are also saying that you've left room in that financing to allow for additional projects potentially or a shift in projects?
It would be additional partnerships. So as an example, if there was an agreement reached with the RTD redevelopment that was going to construct a parking garage, and the construction of that parking garage allowed us to increase our density, and if we increase the density of our property, that means it's actually bonding capacity would increase instead of you're getting, having, you know, $10 million of bonding capacity, maybe now we have 13. And then we could take that extra capacity and use that in partnership with RTD to help fund a garage that we would share. So the intention is, is depending upon how the the intersection develops, that if certain, you know, things happen where we could increase the density, or let's say we get a tenant that, you know, we all love, you know, that shows up and going to produce a lot more sales tax, we get another Apple Store like you guys already have that produces a lot of sales tax revenue, and all of a sudden, we've got more bonding capacity, then we've got more money as a district to put towards public improvements, you know, like, you know, pedestrian connections, like trail connections, like garages, you know, you could even do, you know, districts have the ability to do highly amenitized public plazas. I would love to supercharge our, you know, future public plazas if we had some district financing available for that. So that's really what it allows for is those eventualities.
So if the valuation goes up, you essentially have more equity?
Correct, exactly. Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so then I think we're down to the next slide here, which is the statutory and the city criteria and which we believe has been satisfied with this application, that there's sufficient existing and projected need for organized services. And I think the staff has been through this, but I'll to reiterate, the district will help meet the city's demands for new revenue generating retail, restaurant, employment, and housing opportunities by planning for, designing, acquiring, constructing, installing, relocating, redeveloping, owning, operating, maintaining public improvements to serve the property. The existing services are inadequate, it's undeveloped, and so the infrastructure isn't there to support. The district is capable of providing economical and sufficient services. Under the capital improvement plan, the financial plan, and the service plan demonstrate the ability of the district to finance, operate, and maintain the public infrastructure within the debt and mill levy limits that are provided. The district will have financial ability to discharge proposed indebtedness on a reasonable basis. And we feel that not only because of the various elements of the plan generally, but also specifically because of the mill levy caps. The financing plan does demonstrate the issuance of debt in amounts sufficient to pay for expenses and evidences repayment based on the projected development within the district and within the limitations set forth in the service plan. So adequate service is not or will not be available in the area within a reasonable time and on a comparable basis. And again, that's why we submitted on the timeline that we have, is that we're hoping to get this district organized so that it can finance efficiently what you approve. And there is no other entity or jurisdiction currently willing or able to provide that organized provision of public improvements that the district is proposed to provide. The facility and service standards of the proposed district are compatible with the facility and service standards of the county within the district and also the city. So the district will ensure that the public improvements are designed and constructed in accordance with the standards and specifications that the city and the other applicable local, state, and federal government entities require. The proposal is in substantial compliance with the city's comprehension plan, comprehensive plan, preserving and protecting prominent historic view corridors, promoting public and private open space amenities, concentrating major retail development at the intersection of Mineral Avenue and Santa Fe Drive, increasing land use densities to create a pedestrian scale of development, encouraging higher value retail and office development as the primary TOD land use, encouraging regional and community retail and office uses at arterial crossings, and discouraging strip commercial development along the South Santa Fe Drive. This proposal is in compliance with the county regional or state long range water quality management plans and wastewater plans for the area. Approval of the district and the installation and maintenance of the public improvements will not adversely impact any county, regional, or state long range water quality management plans or wastewater plans for the area, and will enhance the management of stormwater in the area by resolving drainage challenges at the Mineral and Santa Fe intersection, and recharging wetlands in the Platte River open space. The creation of the district will be in the best interests of the area proposed to be served. Development within the district will be uniquely situated to provide new housing and employment opportunities within the city while preserving the connectivity to open space for the benefit of the broader Littleton community. The district can raise funds for public infrastructure through municipal bonds or other government grants or loan programs with favorable rates and terms that are not available to private entities. Without district organization, development will be significantly delayed or will not occur. Does anyone have any other questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Simple. Yeah. I have one question for Reed. So South Park is a business district, is that correct?
I'm sorry, which district?
South Park.
South Park?
Yeah, SPOA. Yeah, South Park, Owners Association.
So that is, who, where's the camera?
So South Park was was a metro district, but they have paid off all their debt and they dissolved the metro district. They are now a property owner association is what they're considered. Business district that we do have, Aspen Grove does have a business district.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Elrod?
So there's a lot of reliance on retail in two different forms. Was, again, it's one of these difficult questions to ask on a plan that hasn't come in front of us yet that we are not to review. So is, when you talk about retail here, are we truly talking about commercial retail? Or do you also, is the plan, does it have any office or other diversification that might make this maybe a little less concentrated in one area for reliance on the tax?
Good, good question. What we, and the staff is aware, we've had conversations over the past couple of years with a couple of different employment groups. Some of them, some of them have come and gone, some of them are still in the background kind of waiting for this development to happen. There's a lot of will this property ever be developed question marks hanging out there in the market, which I will tell you doesn't do us any service, you know, when it comes out to trying to negotiate. But our our hope is that that what we call, you know, ultimately the Harvest District, which is at the intersection, will have a mixture of uses. And we're working closely with staff to create a zoning document that allows that to flourish. We've got some really exciting things coming down the pike. I'm.
We cannot talk about those?
We can't talk about. But the bottom line is I anticipate it's going to be a mixture of commercial uses. I think we'll have a heavy restaurant concentration, which will allow for some great placemaking. But again, it's hard to speak about it because we don't want to violate our.
We probably shouldn't.
Quasi judicial.
I'm going to play safe.
All right, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
This particular metro district is based solely on commercial property.
Correct.
So there are will be, your intention is to not have any, any homeownership.
Homeowners, correct.
So it's all commercial.
Correct.
So talk about the difference in the, or if there are any difference in the dynamics between that type of a metro district versus a metro district where you have homeownership and people that are that that own their homes and that are paying into the metro district through their property tax, and they're sitting on the board of the metro district. And then you also have retail. So we we have familiarity with that in. So we, we have familiarity with that in terms of the metro districts that we, you know, some of them in Littleton. So this is different than that in terms of there's, it's all commercial.
It's all, it's all commercial and the difference in a commercial district is that the landlords ultimately pay the taxes. So the taxes aren't being passed on to some homeowner who may or may not fully understand what their title documents say. And, and I'm not trying to disparage residential districts. You know, I lived for a decade in Stapleton, which is a very significant district. I paid lots of property taxes, but I got lots of benefits from being in that metro district. But the difference here is that, you know, we will pay those taxes ourselves. So in its, you know, commercial property owners are more sophisticated, they have legal advisors, we have pro formas that understand the impacts of these taxes, you know, on our triple net budgets, on our, you know, income statements for the multifamily and for, you know, whatever residential components there are. So it's, it's very different because the parties at the table, it's, it's like playing poker with everyone being a true gamer versus amateur hour. This is not, we've got a table full of amateurs and one shark out there trying to clean sweep. This is a table full of, you know, since we're developers, we're all sharks, as you guys, you know. But, but basically everyone who knows, who knows what they're doing and knows what they're getting into, which is, it's, it's significant. And, and the tenants are very aware today too. You know, every tenant who signs up in a shopping center, the first question they ask is what is, you know, the triple net charges, what are the taxes? And hey, I can pay X dollars in rent, in occupancy costs. So it's not like, you know, you can kind of hide it from the tenant and sign them up for rent and then their taxes increase. They, they're solving for an occupancy cost. So if there's more tax burden, guess what? We get less rent. And it's just that, again, what, the reason why we're doing this is to reduce those total occupancy costs because what we're really trading is a lower rent for a higher tax, but the net is lower overall than if we had to do this all privately. So it's a significant difference because there'll be maybe at the end of the day, you know, four or five property owners out here and there's five people in the district. So basically everyone who's being taxed is a seat at the table.
Councilmembers, laughter.
Just wanted to re-ask that question a different way. So the residents living there will not be paying those taxes because they won't be receiving property tax?
They will, yeah, so they'll be renters, yeah. So the landlord pays that as part of their, part of their equation. And, and again, the, the tax, the additional tax that the multifamily landlord will pay is less than what it would cost if it was all privately financed and they had to pay for it. It would, it'd still be baked into the rent ultimately, but it's, it's a smaller financing charge.
And that multifamily wedge of the pie there is still commercial.
It's still commercial, but it's owned by a sophisticated commercial landlord, correct. To understand all this.
Clarify that.
Yes, thank you very much, councilman.
Councilmember Elrod.
For, because of that comparison, when we look at the 10 million that will be financed through the metro district, what is that as a percentage of the total finance stack? So are we talking 5%, 40%, 70%? So how big is this particular financing for the overall financing of the project?
Yeah, so I think that kind of bar chart I had in here, I'll get to it eventually, kind of illustrated that, illustrated that. So in this stack of, I believe it's like in a, you know, $11 million bond issuance.
Can you tell us what page that is?
That is on-
Because we're not seeing it on the screen. Oh, there it goes.
There we go, yeah, thank you. Of the 11 million, you know, dollar bond issuance, eight and a half goes to actual project infrastructure. So that means two and a half million dollars goes to approximately, you know, to capitalized interest and debt service reserve and costs of issuance. So those are all, you know, I guess, costs of the financing. You know, the capitalized interest and the debt service reserve would be the exact same but higher if it was privately financed because the interest rates would be quite a bit higher because they wouldn't be tax exempt. The costs of issuance, this is a, for a public bond issuance, so the costs of issuance are higher than if it was privately financed, but when you factor in the marginal increase, it's nowhere close to the cost savings associated with doing it with, on a tax exempt basis, if you're following probably what I'm saying. I mean, literally, the cost of financing this infrastructure would be more than double if it was done privately through a combination of construction loans and private investment, you know, because then you've got private investors who require significantly higher returns for investing in infrastructure. And the amortization periods would be significantly shorter. You know, that's, that's really the beauty is district financing allows you to put a home loan on public infrastructure, to make it really simple. And there's a reason why everyone buys a home with a 30-year mortgage amortization, not a, you know, three-year, five-year amortization, which is what you get with commercial lending.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Counsel, any additional questions for staff or for the applicant? Okay. Need a break?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll take a break and resume back here at 8:35.
It started back again, so if you don't mind, please take your seat. Okay, so we do not have a motion on the floor, so I'm going to allow a few more questions. I know Councilmember Elrod has a couple, and Mayor Protem Baldice has a question also. Councilmember Elrod?
So there was a comment made by the applicant that this would be the match for the Quadrant Road or the potential changes that will be making at Mineral and Santa Fe. So that is the first I've ever heard of that, to be quite honest with you. And we've been talking about this for a long time. So I'd like to get some clarification if our, if the City of Littleton's match was dependent and reliant on this particular development. Can you clarify that?
With respect to the service plan specifically, we have the criteria listed in Section 8-11 of the municipal code. That is the basis for our review and recommendation, so anything related to city financing is totally separate from the consideration of tonight's service plan.
No, that's not the question. That's not the question. The question is, when we, it's kind of unrelated to this plan, it was, it's just to address the comment that was made, that we have, we submitted a proposal and were awarded funding for the Mineral-Santa Fe area. And a requirement of that funding is that the City of Littleton will provide matching funds. The source of matching funds, as articulated by the applicant tonight, was the applicant, or the metro district. And that was never communicated to me by key staff, anyone. So I want to clarify that the matching funds for that potential improvement is not dependent on this project.
City manager.
When staff made the proposal to Dr. Cog, it does not explicitly require that we show where the match comes from, other than that the city is obligated for that. So staff is currently in the process of evaluating this opportunity to see if it does qualify as a match. Otherwise, if we're, if we are not able to show this, the right-of-way, the construction of the road, then the city's obligation would be more in the traditional cash. So the in-kind contribution by a developer for the Quad Road, in some instances, and certainly in my experience, can qualify for a match. We just don't have an answer to that. That's the process we're pursuing after we are awarded this particular grant.
That it? Okay, council member.
Can we clarify, so are we going to get an answer, or, I mean, in some kind of this decade, or?
You know, we're working through kind of a state and federal process, so when my, Public Works Director Keith Reeser is not here, and he probably wouldn't even have an answer to the question, so I'm not sure when we will know, but certainly here, I would assume here, within the next several months, we'll have a better understanding of how that obligation might be met.
Mayor Protem.
Yes, thank you. So we heard some dollars kicked around about what the city's going to pay or not pay. So my question has, what is the, I have, what is the cost to the city, if any, beyond any development fees, whether we have a metro district or not have a metro district?
Well, Mayor Protem, you might have to kind of expand on that a little, little bit. When you say costs that the city may have, I'm not aware of any costs that the city would have relative to this metro district.
And without a metro district, then, what, I mean, is it going to cost, is anything beyond, again, development fees?
If you remember, the original annexation agreement, the, this particular property is exempt from any kind of impact fees. So transportation, police, facilities, all our traditional impact fees, we would not be collecting on this property.
Yeah, so with or without it, that doesn't change.
Pardon me?
With or without a metro district, that does not change.
That's correct.
Right. So what does change that would possibly cost us more if we have it, or cost us more if we don't have it? I mean, because we're, we are going to have to do stuff, we're going to have to do some infrastructure and some other things.
Well, for example, if, if, take impact fees aside, if this project or this property was just to lay vacant, and the city was to pursue the Quadrant Road concept for both the south side and the north side, then the city would have to be, pursue the acquisition of right-of-way through this particular property. So we would have cost in the acquisition of the right-of-way, and then certainly all the construction. So the opportunity, as it's been proposed here by the applicant, is that they have a project for which they have a need to construct roads to service their development. The possibility, the opportunity is for us to kind of add on to that in a configuration of this Quad Road concept to alleviate the traffic concerns in the short term here for Mineral and Santa Fe. Does that help?
Yes, thank you. Kyle, did you have, did you have a comment on that?
Another question. Councilmember Fay.
This is for either the city manager or the city attorney. We're hearing a lot of ideas of things that might happen, and we're being asked to approve this metro district based on things that might happen. Is there anything that we can get to assure, to make our approval conditional upon those becoming real plans?
Well, I would say that already within the proposed service plan, it requires that an approved development plan occur, which would occur in a public process, which would occur in the same way that we would amend other development plans, going through Planning Commission, then going in front of the city council. So in terms of how the city could guarantee that they would be getting what it is, it's because it would be coming back in the terms of an amended development plan, and if it didn't pass, then the metro district wouldn't be happening.
Yet we would still have a metro district approved, that we, well, is, that we would have some pressure then to approve the plan and the, whatever goes with it, because we already, in order to substantiate the fact that we have a metro district.
Right, but the metro district wouldn't have been incurring any debt, would be, gone into an inactive status, they would have applied for an inactive status because they had not done any financing on the problem, on the, on the project, because they have not got an approved development plan.
Mayor, just maybe, maybe this is something for the applicant to comment on, but their attorney kind of made the, the comment that if a plan amendment is approved, that they would be coming back, and it was substantially different than perhaps what's shown on this financial plan for the metro district, that they would be coming back to the city for approval of that. So you asked a question about whether or not there is something to kind of guarantee something. This is perhaps a little, maybe not quite as explicit as that, but it would be maybe a condition of approval, again, applicant may have to react to this, where you are requiring that the, if there is a plan amendment approved, that the financial plan, the metro district, that comes back to the council for, for approval.
I think we, city attorney, I think we need to make something very, very clear here. We are not approving any promises, we are not approving any what could be's, we are not proving anything that does, that has been discussed in terms of next steps. This is, this is a approval of a metro district based on statutory information.
That is correct. Tonight, we are before city council to approve the service plan for a metro district based upon six criteria that are set forth in the city code, which model state law, which coincidentally hasn't been updated in 35 years. So it's a little antiquated in terms of what we can be considering, but that's what's before us tonight, not to necessarily peek over the fence and try to see what's, what's going to be built or what could be built, because that's a separate process, that is separate development criteria that need to go through. Tonight, it's just the six criteria about this metro service plan.
Thank you. And I think that's what's been challenging, not only for the community, but for council, is, is as we said in the beginning, it's, it, in some ways, as one of the citizens says, it feels a little cart before the horse, understanding the timing and, and all of that, but I think being very clear about separating the two events is mandatory for us tonight.
Carol Fay, did you have a question?
I, I think the applicant is going to try to present again, and I wonder if that's appropriate at this time.
Um, I, I think we're fine, thank you. Anything else? Any other questions? Council, can we have a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. I make a motion to disapprove the service plan.
We have a motion to disapprove the service plan? Do I have a second? A second. We have a motion and a second discussion. Councilmember Elrod.
I'd like to make some comments. I recognize that there has been a lot of time and effort from both parties to bring this forward now, and I also understand the reasons on the importance of the timing of this. But one of the things I really struggled with was, you know, the criteria in the decision that we're making tonight, that it is very clear, it is not about what will be built, but that is, in essence, is kind of the point. The, the last item here, which is the proposal, whether the proposal is or is not in substantial compliance with the city's comprehensive plan, we are not able to determine that at this time, because we're, we're making assumptions. And, and that is, you know, the one item that I just feel that we cannot responsibly support at this time, because of those assumptions. I, I am also concerned about the financial ability, the other item was that the district will be able to have the financial ability to discharge of the proposed indebtedness. Right now, there is, as I stated, there's significantly reliance on retail, and again, this is an assumption, and we are in an environment which we're hearing a lot of concern of where our economy is going to go. So that is beginning to feel like there is a greater risk to that particular scenario and criteria as well. So for those two reasons, at this time, I cannot support the service plan.
Other discussion?
Yes, I'll, I will, for everything you said, I disagree with.
Okay. Succint?
I, I think we are down the path here that this is a viable option for these, for the Evergreen Development to get moving. I do think the timing is imperative, I understand it better now, why it is so important for them to get moving. They have been sitting on this property since 2017, and it is, there is nothing shady about what they're trying to do. I think it is the way they can get bonded in order to create finance and to get this project moving. So I, I, I'm going to say no to, I guess, your motion.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you. For their attorney, our city attorney. So if the motion fails as a disapprove, does that mean it's approved?
No, that means we have to make another motion.
But we're allowed to make another motion, right?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, so it doesn't, that isn't the end of it, okay.
Correct.
Cool.
Other comments? Councilmember Fay.
I, I would like to pick up the word that Councilmember Elrod used, which is assumptions. We're, we're being asked to move forward on this based on a number of assumptions of things that will happen, and I need to see a lot more concrete plan before approving this, especially for the economic viability. That, that, that makes me really nervous to march forward without more concrete plan of, of what can, what will actually be done.
Councilmember Schlechter.
Yeah, some of the comments from the public and some of the council members, you know, I think this plan, or this, um, metro district would be easier if there were an approved plan development in place, but I don't know if that necessarily really matters all that much when you look at the six criteria. And, you know, you say there's a lot of assumptions, everything in the future is an assumption, so, you know, I, you know, if you look at the six criteria that we can consider, staff has shown or suggested that they meet them all, the applicant obviously thinks they meet them all. There is one that gives me a little pause, and that was the, let me get to it here, that is the economical, the proposed special district is capable of providing economical and sufficient service to the area within its proposed boundaries. It's a big assumption, we don't know. The hypothetical, hypothetical project they've put forward does state that, and, you know, this is also contingent on there being an approved development plan, so I think that gives me a little reassurance that whatever comes out of this in the future has gone for us, before us again, and been approved by us again, or not approved by us if it doesn't work. So, yeah, that's kind of where I stand on that. And I just think it's also important to point out to the public that this is not, you know, subsidizing the developer, we're not building the, you know, this financing is not going to build the apartments, it's not going to go build the buildings, it's for the public improvements of the streets and the water and the, and the things like that. So it's not underwriting the whole, whole development. When I saw those numbers at first, I'm like, it only costs $8 million to make something like this? And then you had to think about it, what it's actually creating the financing for.
Councilmember Schlechter.
One more final comment. Again, we're not voting on the future of this development, we're voting on should this development have a metro district. So I wanted to be clear that the assumption that Councilwoman Elrod used, we get it, we don't quite know what exactly is going to be there, but we're not voting on that tonight. We're voting on should we create a special district for this in order for them to give them the tools to move forward.
I have a comment to that. I want to be clear, I am not making my decision on that. There is a clear criteria that is asked of us to consider, is whether this proposal is in substantial compliance with the city's comprehensive plan. In absence of an application that has gone through the process, in essence, in, not in essence, is essentially saying we cannot support that statement. We cannot support that this is substantially in compliance with the city comprehensive plan without having a plan that has been approved. So that, that's the point that I'm making there.
Councilmember Fay.
And, and I, I want to reemphasize that with the, of the six items that we're looking at in considering this metro district, we do not have clear information that the metro district that's proposed will be able to be economical, and we do not have substantial information that it complies with the comprehensive plan that we have. We, we've seen some words that says that, yes, it would like to be, but that is very different than enough evidence to believe that it will. Thank you.
Anybody else? Councilmember Schlechter.
You know, Councilmember Elrod and Fay make, you know, decent arguments. When I look at the actual language of the code, which is a little different than it was in the presentation by staff, it kind of makes it a little clearer. So it says, "City council may disapprove the service plan submitted by petitioners," which is what the motion is here, "for these six criteria." And one of them is, "The proposed special district is incapable of providing economical and sufficient service to the area within its proposed." I, I don't know if it's incapable, I don't, I mean, I can't say it's fully capable, we don't know, but I can't say it is incapable. And then number six, "The proposal is not, is not in substantial compliance of the city's comprehensive plan." You know, like you said, you know, you can't say it is, but I can't say it's not as well.
Okay. Peggy, did you have something?
I, I do have concerns, and I'm sorry I have to press this button in less than a minute probably, but I have concerns about the impact on the traffic and things that we have discussed and say we're going to address but haven't done yet. And if we approve this, it's going to make it difficult to, to do one of the issues that we've talked about in terms of relieving traffic, the east-west, well, particularly the eastbound traffic coming from the west, west of, of this. Maybe, Mark, you were, somebody can comment on anything I just said?
I, I would just comment that at this point, we are not talking about a future proposed development or amendment, we're really just talking about the metro district itself, the establishment of the metro district, not the specific uses that may be happening within that district.
So as a follow-up, so if we approve this, and in six months, we, well, I won't be on council in six months, but the council decides to proceed in a certain direction with infrastructure that affects this, that's tough cookies for these people.
If in six months, the developer came back to city council with an amended development plan, and got approval from the city council, and was able to start actual construction, they obtained their financing and got construction, is there, there would be infrastructure going in presumably according to kind of this concept plan of how that may look. So I'm not sure how best to, to answer the question you have.
That's okay, I'm not sure, you know, how, I mean, it's all moving around in a sense, because we've got more than one thing possible in the future, and they might conflict, so I'm just...
You have a development in which the uses may change in the future, depending upon the amendment to the development plan, how that goes, as well as kind of the design of how that may look. That will change throughout the amendment to the development plan until it gets to a site development plan or final development plan, however you want to call it. There's going to be changes, it's, it's in a concept draft, this is close enough type form for the purposes of the metro district discussion tonight.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have one.
Okay, one more.
I'd like to make an important distinction as well, that to disapprove this is just disapproving this now, and does not mean that when the applicant... disapproving this now, and does not mean that when the applicant comes forward with their formal application that this could not be presented, and in fact, probably should be presented at the same time, because at that point in time, we have, or shortly thereafter, because we, at that point in time, we have a clarity of exactly what will be developed, what potential services may be needed or amenities for public infrastructure confirmed. So it's just about the point in time of when this decision is being made.
I'm not going to support this amendment or this motion. I do believe that both staff and the applicant have satisfied the requirements. There's obviously, in always, in all the work that we do, some ambiguity, and nothing is crystal clear. That's why, that's why we have to do this. But I do believe that the requirements that are listed here, that are the considerations that we need to make are, I think, in terms of the economics, the economic loss to the community is zero. If a development does happen, and then the whole development gets built, and the shops are doing great, and all of that, and then it all fails, that would be an economic crisis or challenge for the city. But the economics of this metro district are really the developers' economics, and I think that they've made that pretty clear. And I think that I was challenged by the whole timing thing. I understand, I think we've gotten some good response back from the applicant and from staff in terms of the timing on this, and I agree with their attorney, that there's some unfortunate crossovers between what the state does and what the legislation does, and, you know, and that's unfortunate, and getting caught in that. And so I don't think that that should be something penalized on. So I'm going to go ahead and vote against this particular motion. So I'm going to also call for the vote. A vote in favor disapproves this metro district. So if you do not want to support the metro district, you need to vote yes. Am I correct?
Correct. If you feel, in going through the criteria, that the metro district service plan does not meet one of those six criteria, it is a motion to disapprove, so you would be voting yes to disapprove if you found one of those six not to be in place.
Okay. Counsel?
Yes.
Ready to vote?
Good.
The vote is three in favor with Councilmember Driscoll, Mayor Protem Faltiz, Mayor Brinkman, and Councilmember Schlechter, voting no, the motion fails three to four.
Counsel, I need another motion, please.
Mayor?
Yep.
I move to approve the resolution approving the River Park Metropolitan District Service Plan.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ready to vote?
Can I get clarity on this motion from legal counsel?
Sure. For this particular motion, a motion to approve, you would need to be finding all six criteria are satisfied. So a motion, or I guess a vote for yes would be a motion to approve the metro district service plan. Within that service plan contains the conditions of having to have an approved development plan.
Yep.
The vote is four in favor with Councilmember Cole, Councilmember Fay, and Councilmember Elrod, voting no, the motion carries four to three.
Thank you. Okay, our next item on our agenda is our comments and reports. City manager, any report?
No report, Mayor.
City attorney?
Nothing from the city attorney.
Councilmember Cole?
No report.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Just wanted to thank staff and all the city, all the volunteers for Western Welcome Week. That was really well done. The parade was excellent. Also attended the Littleton Business Chamber. This is an excellent group, so if you have a business in Littleton, I highly recommend joining at a very nominal fee, and they're doing a lot of good things out there for, on your behalf. And I just want to remind everybody, there's a meet and greet tomorrow at Berry Park, beginning at?
Four.
Four.
Four to six. Free pizza.
That's it.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Yes, the Western Welcome Week, whole week, was incredible. Kudos to all the volunteers. I think many of us had a chance to go to the recognition of the volunteers. And their motto that they had this year was keeping the tradition, or what was it?
Right. The tradition continues.
The tradition continues. And I think after 91 years, I think that's great, and I hope they keep that tradition for the next 91 years. But, and there's many city staff that also work as volunteers, it has nothing to do with being city staff, it's just that they live and work here, and they love Littleton. And like all the other volunteers, they contribute their personal time. So thank you to all of them. That's it.
Councilmember Schlechter.
Yeah, last week, I attended the Littleton Public Schools Board meeting. They had a few comments about council, that they were, they just wanted to express their appreciation for city funding, the SROs, and also their appreciation for us actually showing up for the breakfast.
Novel idea.
I also attended the RTD Local Governments Meeting, and the whole discussion on that was about Bus Rapid Transit. They kind of showed the Tier Four projects out of there, and it looks like they have, there's eight of the Tier Four, and they're looking to find ways to do three or four of them. And it looks like Broadway is right at that, you know, right at four, right there. So it looks like it might be high on that list to receive federal funding.
That's good.
Good job.
Councilmember Fay? No report. Councilmember Elrod?
Ditto what Pat and everybody else said about Western Welcome Week, a fantastic event. I'm also happy to see the new artwork in the building, so we have quite a collection, so it's good to see some of it get around and visible to the public and changing, so thank you for that.
Just one thing I forgot, that for those who don't really know, LPS is back in session, so be aware when you drive around the schools, got lots of kids running around there, so...
Yep, traffic.
I will just echo the Western Welcome Week. I think that it is, particularly the parade, it is absolutely phenomenal, what an event that is. I never really understood it until I came to Littleton and experienced it, and it really is quite, quite the hometown. And as Jerry said, the contributions from just all the citizens, and whether they need to or not, they're there supporting and volunteering, and it was a fun day. And then I, Karina stole my thunder on the art, too. We've been complaining for 10 years to replace some of the art in here, and so thank you to the Fine Arts Board for curating and hanging some new art. And that is it for us tonight. We adjourned.